Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. We will have a prayer led by Councilwoman Laura Ward, and then please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather here this evening, we pray for the welfare and safety of the residents we serve of our city. May every phone call we pick up, every message we respond to, and every decision we make be done with kindness, humility, and knowledge. Guide us to be responsible stewards of our community by opening our minds and hearts to the welfare of all people in our community, and help us to realize our differences can make us stronger. Guide us to see the benefit provided by differing perspectives, and be willing to question assumptions that serve only to obstruct our paths to progress. We ask that you protect our police, firefighters, and EMTs as they serve and protect us. We thank them for their dedication and sacrifice to our city. May the decisions we make help to address the needs and issues that will keep both our citizens and emergency personnel safe. On this election eve, may our community take their civic duty seriously and exercise their right to vote. Please guide us to use our voting privilege wisely, seeking wisdom in considering the issues and qualifications of the candidates. Let us pray for the candidates, their families, and volunteers who have committed themselves to being public servants. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I will now call to order the Monday, November 7, 2016 meeting of the Jefferson City Council. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Branch.
Here.
Costalis.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Hesse.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Krather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Here.
This time, we'll entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. Item A, I have a proclamation for Miss Fashionetta presented to Donna White. So, Mrs. White, you're welcome to come forward, and you have some lovely ladies with you. You're welcome to bring them up as well.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. The G.O. Ivy Foundation, in association with the Jefferson City Graduate Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, is proud to present to you the 2016 Miss Fashionetta Debutantes. They are Malin Cooper, Cheyenne Morneau, and Destiny Sanders. These young ladies have participated in a variety of workshops and quality experiences over the last several months, including career workshops, etiquette workshops, father-daughter outings, mother-daughter brunches, just to name a few of the activities. They have produced scholarly essays and completed community service activities. We are very proud to present them as Young Ladies of Distinction in this Miss Fashionetta Cotillion.
Well, congratulations to all four of you. That's a wonderful honor, and I really appreciate you being here tonight for the council meeting. And I have a special proclamation that I would like to share with you. Whereas Jefferson City Graduate Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority of Jefferson City has sponsored its Miss Fashionetta Cotillion biennial since 1978, and whereas the debutantes participating in the Miss Fashionetta Cotillion must be young ladies who have demonstrated a positive attitude, high achievement, and have set worthwhile goals as they strive for womanhood, and whereas among the goals of Miss Fashionetta Cotillion are the promotion of social poise, grace, and the enhancement of self-esteem and self-confidence in the participating debutantes, and whereas the Jefferson City Graduate Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority proudly presents its debutantes that we have here this evening, I hereby proclaim November 19, 2016, as Miss Fashionetta Cotillion Day. So, thank you and congratulations to the four of you. And I appreciate you also, Donna, and if you'd like, we can all come forward and I'll take a picture with the proclamation. And item B, we have a proclamation to present for World Pancreatic Cancer Day, presented to Nicole Reynolds. So, you're welcome to come forward. Thank you for being here tonight, and we also have some guests with you this evening.
I do. In 2013, my father was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. I hadn't heard much about the disease, except I knew it killed Patrick Swayze and Steve Jobs. My dad's cousin Nancy had just passed after a very, very brief battle with the disease. The diagnosis hit us in the gut. My dad, who never went to the doctor, would spend the next two years in and out of doctors' offices fighting this beast. My dad was an anomaly. Pancreatic cancer patients barely make it that long. In fact, this year approximately 53,070 people will be diagnosed with the disease, and 41,780 people will die from the disease. Sadly, the average life expectancy is three to six months. Seventy-one percent will succumb in the first year. Every day, an estimated 905 people die. We lost Dad September 30 of last year, and shortly after Carl Vogel from Jefferson City also died from the same disease. This proclamation is a step in the right direction, and hopefully will bring, we'll bring, sorry, will hopefully shine a light on this disease and open people's eyes to what it can do. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for being here this evening, and I would like to share the proclamation as well, and we will definitely do our best to raise awareness, and appreciate you being here, and you have our sympathies as well.
Thank you.
Whereas in 2016, an estimated 53,070 people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, and 41,780 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer surpassed breast cancer this year to become the third-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second-leading cause by 2020, and whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just eight percent, and whereas the symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, when they present themselves, it is generally in later stages, and seventy-one percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of diagnosis. And whereas approximately 860 pancreatic cancer deaths will occur in Missouri in 2016, and whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh-most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world, and whereas there will be an estimated 418,451 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in 2020, and whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Jefferson City are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Therefore, I declare Mayor Kerry Turgeon, I do declare November 17, 2016, as the World Pancreatic Cancer Day. So, I really appreciate you being here. We'll do what we can to promote that as well. And if you'd like, we can take a picture with the proclamation, but do you have some in the audience you would like to introduce or to join you up here this evening?
This is my mom, my sister, and my niece.
We're glad to have all of you here, and I notice you're wearing purple. Is there a significance to that?
Purple's the color of pancreatic cancer ribbon, so I wear purple every day, just so someone will ask, they're like, "I wear purple shoes," and people will be like, "Why are you wearing purple shoes?" Because you need to know about pancreatic cancer, so.
Thank you for sharing the story of your father with all of us, and we appreciate that. Are there any questions, too, of council this evening? All right, thank you, joining me up here for a photo.
A photograph.
Chief Schofield is going to recognize the Tunnels to Towers Traveling Trophy, and we also have Roxy Van Poel here this evening. Welcome. That's pretty impressive there, Chief.
I don't doubt that even though it's wood, it would still be effective.
Just to give you a brief background, on the Stephen Stiller Tunnels to Towers Foundation, the Stiller family started the Stephen Stiller Tunnels to Towers Foundation to honor the memory of their brother, Stephen, a New York City firefighter, FDNY, who lost his life on September 11 after strapping on his gear and running through the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel to the Twin Towers. The goal of the Stephen Stiller Tunnels to Towers Foundation is to continue Stephen's legacy by supporting our nation's first responders and service members by building for a better, for the brave, building America for the bravest, a proud program that Stephen Stiller Tunnels to Towers Foundation constructs specially-adapted smart homes for the most catastrophically injured service members. So, just to kind of give you a little bit of background on this race, you can see this was the first event here in Jeff City on September the 17th. It's a little unique in that we run the race in our bunker gear, and as you can imagine, that's a little more difficult than running a normal 5K. So, we have our, not only our bunker gear, but also an air pack and a helmet. The one thing we allow everybody to fudge on a little bit is we actually wear tennis shoes. We had one of the members of our group wear boots, and he regretted that decision. The bunker boots were rough, over five kilometers. So, but this is the traveling trophy for the fastest firehouse, and so there were three of us on this team, although we had, I think, how many participants total, would you say, Roxy?
We had a little over 200.
200 participants. It was a great day, a beautiful morning. Jeff City had, I think, about eight participants, and there were three of us that did decide to run it, and we did win the fastest time. I told my guys that there's a lot more competition coming next year, and they're already gunning for us, so we're going to have to train a little bit harder to maintain this traveling trophy, which is our goal, but it's an opportunity for us to not only support a great organization, but also promote fitness and functional capacity within the Fire Department. So, I present it to you as City Council and to the mayor.
Thank you, and congratulations to you and the Fire Department team. That's a wonderful achievement, so congratulations. And it's definitely a very good cause, so Roxy, do you want to say a few words about the event?
If you don't mind, and I did want to give Coach, or Coach, Chief Schofield, since this is a traveling award, we do have the placard for the first winners, and you can go ahead and put that on. What we'll do is run it up as if it's a ladder, so that each year we know, you know, who has won that award. And then I did want to leave you with these photos.
Thank you.
Joel Swater and Sean Henning were the other two runners in that team. And the one thing I do want to just share with you.
Roxy, you can speak in the mic, too.
Okay, very briefly, I do want to share with you, I am a, well, Jefferson City resident. I live outside of the city limits, so I don't have a council-munner-woman, I don't think, but I found out about the foundation strictly by accident, but once I did, in the 5K in New York City, but once I did, my daughter and I went and ran in the 5K. We actually retraced Stephen's footsteps, and it was quite an emotional experience for both of us, and it was the catalyst that brought the 5K here last year. And I do want to share with you that although, you know, we built the homes, we helped build the homes for Todd Nicely at the Lake of the Ozarks and Tyler Huffman here in Jefferson City, there are over 200 service members right now that are on a waiting list, and there are other organizations like the Gary Sinise Organization that also builds these smart homes for the veterans. And all of, you know, we're a four-star charity, I believe Gary Sinise's organization is, too. It's not like the Wounded Warrior Project where a lot of the money goes to overhead. A lot of the money goes to build these smart homes for these veterans that have been catastrophically injured. And more recently, the shooting in Dallas, as well as the shooting last week in Des Moines, they do raise funds as well to help pay off mortgages for our first responders who are killed in the line of duty and killed in a violent manner. So, I think it's a very important organization. It's one that I, we're looking forward to next year's race and hope to see a lot of you there. It'll be the third, hopefully the third weekend again of September, we'll be submitting a permit, but would love to see you all there.
Thank you, Roxy, and just the whole event is very significant in keeping the memory alive of Stephen and other firefighters and public safety individuals who are running towards danger to help us instead of away from it, and that's what our policemen and firemen do every day, so are firefighters as well. So, appreciate that. And if you'd like, or is there any council questions or comments? I'd like to get a picture with the trophy, and Roxy, if you would want to come up here, and Chief Schofield, and if the council wouldn't mind, and if they would all get up here, and we'll get them in the back of the photograph as well. All right, very impressive. Item five, public hearings, there are none. Item six, appointments by the mayor. Let's see, we do have the following appointments for Convention and Visitors Bureau, which include Brian Bernskeiter, Dale Gersner, Cindy Schneiders. Historic Preservation Commission, we have Doug Record and Art Hernandez. Cemetery Resources Board, Jeannie Rutledge. Those are all reappointments, and Councilman Branch led the Administration Committee meeting that presented those. Councilman Branch, is there anything to add on that?
Well, not really to that, but as a committee, we have started a little process where we're going to review all of the Citizen Committee and Commissions. Just a little heads up.
Great, thank you, and we do appreciate all the volunteer appointees on our city boards and commissions. Is there a motion to approve those appointees?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. Do we have any this evening? I don't think so, no. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. I'll start with my announcements this evening. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Rick Mahalovich for filling in while I was out of the country visiting China and the rest of the council. I know there was a council meeting and a work session and a few other events, including the Lafayette Street dedication. That was exciting and hated to miss it, but was glad that you were there to preside and bring well wishes from the city, and also the Special Olympics Missouri, among a few other events, too. So, thank you for filling in. I had a wonderful trip to China. It was quite an experience. I'd never been there, but as a member of the Missouri State University Board of Governors, I had the opportunity to attend. We had a group of us that went to visit. We have several partnerships in China and some university partnerships. I was able to go visit with the students and faculty, and to see the campus and the partnerships there was really amazing. So, we were in four cities while I was there. We went to Beijing, Xi'an, Dalian, and Hong Kong, and it was quite an experience, so really enjoyed it. There was an article in the News Tribune on Saturday, so Mr. Richardson wrote a nice article there. And also, I would like to share more about my trip to China on my blog, so be watching that this week. I'll be adding a story about China, and that is going to be at mayorturgeon.blogspot. So, if you want to read more about my China trip, I'm adding pictures to it as we speak, and then we'll be able to share that. But I just want to have an opportunity to share what a wonderful time we had, and although our cultures may be different, it's interesting to see that college students can be the same no matter where we are in the world, and that they have a lot of the same interests, and it was great to experience that firsthand and to see and appreciate some of our similarities and differences at the same time. So, enjoyed that. Thank you for letting me enjoy a little time away from City Hall and extend wishes while I was in China on behalf of Jefferson City. I also wanted to announce why I have this red ribbon here. I wanted to present this to JJ from Parks, and this is something that McClung Park had a dedication of the playground last week, and several of us were there to cut the ribbon on the new playground. So, I wanted to officially present this to Parks and congratulate you. And if anyone hasn't gone out to McClung, it is very impressive, the new playground equipment is like really none I have seen there. So, did you have anything you want to add on that?
No, just thanks for coming out and celebrating that with us. It was a great project, had a couple different partners, the McClung, friends of McClung Park helped vote, and actually, the highest vote is the playground that you see out there, and then the leadership Jeff City 2016 class raised funds and donated money for the arch swing that you see out there. So, it was a very fun project and community partners that helped us with that.
Well, thank you. That was very impressive, so please check it out if you haven't had a chance to yet. So, I'll pass this ribbon down for your safekeeping at Parks. And another reminder, of course, tomorrow is Election Day, so just a reminder for everybody to vote. Tomorrow is Tuesday, November 8, so make sure everybody remembers to vote tomorrow. And also, this Friday, November 11, is Veterans Day. There are several events going on, too, that I will be at are the Freedoms Corner Event at 9:30 a.m., and then also at 11 a.m., the Jefferson City Veterans Council is having an event at the Capitol Rotunda. There may be other events that I haven't listed here. Councilman Schreiber, did you want to include some more?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there's a special event at Lincoln University that will be held at Martin Luther King Hall in the Dr. Thomas D. Pauli Theater at 2 p.m., and the guest speaker will be Colonel Christopher Frye, Sr., who is U.S. Army Cadet Command and Assistant Chief Staff for the United States Army. So, there will also be a special play that I believe was written by the late Dr. Pauli, and it will commemorate the 62nd and 65th United States Colored Infantry. So, that's at 2 o'clock on Veterans Day, so try to come if you can, because I think it should be an excellent, an excellent event honoring our veterans.
Great, thank you. All right, and are there any council announcements for the four standing committees? You can get a schedule of the meeting calendar at JeffersonCityMo.gov, and that also includes attached agendas there. Any special announcements on the four standing committees? Okay. Next item B is Mrs. McMillan to present us some information on the Ripple Glass Ribbon-Cutting Ceremony coming up in December.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to invite the council and the public to join Mayor Turgeon, Ripple Glass, and City of Jefferson staff in celebrating the fifth anniversary of glass recycling in Jefferson City. So, to commemorate that, Ripple Glass wanted to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and that's going to be held on December 8 at 4 p.m. at the Save-A-Lot Glass Bin at 1228 East McCarty. Thank you.
That is something to celebrate. The glass recycling has been a big hit, and I didn't realize we've had it already for five years.
It's wonderful.
That's great. Any council comments? All right, and I would also like to, while we're talking about Janice, I have something I want to present to Janice. So, Janice was recently recognized by the News Tribune as 16 and 16. You'll see up on the screen there, we have a picture of it, and this is where they took 16 businesswomen in Jefferson City and recognized them for their achievements and accomplishments, and we're very excited to have you on behalf of the City of Jefferson to celebrate. So, we have it on the screen, but I also have a copy here, and we're very proud to have you representing the city in this capacity, and it's just great for you to have the honor. You've been with the city a long time, and it was just really wonderful to see you recognized.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you all as an administrative capacity for the city. Really, thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome, and the recognition is well-deserved, and along with the recognition, I'd like to present you a city coin, and.
Finally, I get one.
You finally get one! So, congratulations to you for this recognition. And we are going to get one more picture tonight, so Matt can take the picture here, so if you'll hand my camera off to Matt.
Oh, this Matt.
Oh, this Matt, this Matt, never mind. And Erin Wiseman, Councilwoman Wiseman and I are going to come down here with you, and then the rest of you can get behind us. Erin and I were both recognized for 15 and 15 last year, so we're going to come up here and present this to you, and if the rest of you would get behind us would be great. And on to our other announcements. Wanted to mention Matt Marash has announcement for a FEMA open house, so Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Yeah, the city will be hosting an open house, so the citizens here in town can learn more about the federal flood insurance program. After our recent flooding, a couple months prior, we learned that there was probably some confusion about this program. Many people thought they weren't eligible, so we have contacted reps from FEMA and SEMA. We'll both be here and in this room, and the meeting is scheduled for November 22 from 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. It's an open-house format, so you can come and go as you like and get the information you need and make some decisions about flood insurance. We'll be advertising the meeting more widely and also probably mention it at the next council meeting as well.
Great, thank you. And Councilman Costalis would like to announce his town hall.
Thank you. This is a reminder to everybody, the Fourth Ward Town Hall Meeting will be Saturday, November 12, at 10 a.m. It'll be at 1315 Fairgrounds Road. It's the Capital West Event Center, and we're going to pretty much stick on topic of stormwater infrastructure problems and how we can go about getting some funds to possibly eliminate that or start toward eliminating some of the backup there, the projects we have. If anybody has any, any citizens have any questions they'd like to submit, go ahead and send them to your council rep, and they'll forward them on to the Director of Public Works, so he can come in with the answers. That's all.
Thank you. All right, any further council announcements this evening? All right. Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative Update, and Mr. Jackson is not here tonight, so I'll announce that this Saturday is the last home game for Lincoln University. I believe that starts at 1, and it is for veterans as well. If veterans show. If veterans show their ID, they can get in the game free, and guests of the veterans are at a reduced rate as well, so we're glad to see that we do have another home game, so hopefully the council can attend that. And Councilman Graham, is that's correct, anything else?
It's for all heroes, whether it's police, fire, and everybody as well, too, so.
Oh, great. So all of our public safety heroes as well.
Yes.
Wonderful. So that is, that is great, that Lincoln is recognizing that. Item 10, Presentations from the Gallery on Specific Bills or Resolutions, and we have nobody signed up for that this evening. Item 11, the Consent Agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bills Introduced 2016-66.
An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Establishing Election Dates in the City of Jefferson, Missouri for 2017.
Thank you. Mr. Mullman?
Thank you, Mayor. Section 1222 of the City Code requires that the City Council approve an ordinance setting forth the procedures of the upcoming municipal elections in April 2017. That process starts up in December, and so this ordinance fulfills the duties of the ordinance to pass the ordinance, setting forth the elections that will be held and the timeframes that they will be held on.
Thank you. Any questions for Ryan? Thank you. 2016-67.
An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Approving a Preliminary PUD Plan Amendment for Property Located at 2005 Shot Hill Woods Drive, Described as Part of Lot 60 of Shot Hill Woods, Section 2, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Thank you. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a proposal to demolish an existing restaurant here in town and redevelop the property as a new restaurant. And the property is zoned PUD, so it's being presented to you as an amended PUD plan. The property is located, well, here's a vicinity map. On the eastern edge of the city, you'll see the intersection, highway interchange of Eastland Drive and Highway 5063 there toward the top of the screen. The property is located on Eastland Drive at the corner of Eastland and Shot Hill Woods Drive. It's currently in use as Pizza Hut Restaurant. This is a zoning map of the area. As mentioned, the property is zoned a PUD, Planned Unit Development, was developed according to a PUD plan that was approved back in 1991. It is, the property is part of a large commercial development with a variety of retail, restaurant, service-oriented businesses. There is a residential neighborhood to the south across Shot Hill Woods Drive from the property. We have received a number of comments from residents of that neighborhood, which are contained within your packets and within the excerpt of the P&amp;Z minutes, contained within your packets as well. As mentioned, the property is developed with a Pizza Hut Restaurant, and the property does gain its driveway access via Shot Hill Woods Drive. There is an existing drive-through window on the north side of the restaurant, located right about there. And this is the PUD site plan that is submitted for approval. It shows, again, the demolition of the existing building and reconstruction according to this plan. The new building would contain a drive-through lane. The business is identified as a Taco Bell Restaurant. There's a speaker box associated with the drive-through lane located right there, so it is pointing away from the residential neighborhood to the northeast corner of the site. The PUD plan outlines landscaping, including a number of trees around the building, and also some landscaping attention placed around the order box and menu board, partially in response to staff comments in an effort to try to muffle some of the sounds from that area. There's also sidewalk that would be installed along both Eastland Drive and Shot Hill Woods Drive. And there are some signage and landscaping restrictions that were built into the PUD plan through negotiations with staff and the applicant, limiting the signage to essentially what is there right now, which is an existing pole sign about 25 feet in height, located at the northwest corner of the property, and lighting very similar to what is there This item was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of October 13th, and is scheduled for a public hearing in front of the City Council on November 21st. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilman Prather?
We've received a few complaints about, you know, objections to the plan, and I guess a couple objections you've already hit on, one was the sound. Is the, is there going to be any sound barriers on the other side of the property where the, that basically borders where the residents would be?
Hey, so unfortunately, many of the residential homes, for example, on Fox Trail Drive, are located on a hill that kind of overlooks the site, and so I'm not sure what a sound barrier would necessarily look like in that regard.
So you don't think it's necessary?
I don't, I don't know that it'd be possible.
Okay.
There, there is a little bit of a PUD zoning tract of land right there. Its purpose was, is essentially for a shopping center sign for businesses located down Shot Hill Woods Drive. There's no landscaping on that property. It is privately held by Oscar's Restaurant. Even, you know, installation of stuff there would, would be below the line of sight for many of those homes on Fox Trail looking toward the property.
What percentage of those neighbors on that street would you say were in favor versus against it?
I can't speak to any in favor. I believe there were three on the cul-de-sac that either testified or submitted correspondence, three homes, three properties, and one on Eastland Drive, so.
All right, thank you.
Any further council questions? Okay, thank you. 2016-68.
An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Changing, Amending, and Modifying the Zoning Map of the Zoning Code of the City of Jefferson by Rezoning 2.85 Acres of Land Addressed as 815 West Stadium Boulevard from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C2 General Commercial.
Thank you. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To orient you to the location of this property, up on the screen is a vicinity map. You'll notice Missouri Boulevard toward the top of the screen, and Stadium Boulevard going down through the middle of the screen. The property is highlighted there at the bottom, just south of Hyde Park Road. It's worth pointing out that this is in the vicinity of several big-box retail buildings, including Menards, Walmart, Target. The property is zoned a C1, a Neighborhood Commercial zoning district, as is much of the Hyde Park development area there shown on the screen. You'll notice right across the street is a vacant C2 zoning district. This request largely arises based on the differences in signage regulations between the C1 and the C2 districts. The property is owned by Providence Bank, and the application was submitted by them. It arose because they, they have an existing sign in front of their business, I believe it's 23 feet tall, and they would like to remove that sign and replace it with a new one. Well, the C1 zoning district permits a maximum sign size, height of 10 feet, and so we would be unable to approve a permit to remove what is basically a grandfathered sign and replace with a new. And so they are proposing to rezone their property to a C2 district, which does permit the taller sign heights. As mentioned, the property is located near a number of big-box retail developments. It's located on a street with a fairly high traffic count, and might lend itself well to a C2 zoning designation based on its location. You know, one, one staff idea when processing this case was that depending on, on comments and how this case proceeds, it might be worthwhile to pursue staff-initiated rezoning of other properties on Stadium Boulevard that are zoned C1 to upgrade them to a C2 category as well. This item was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on October 13th, and is scheduled for a public hearing on November 21st. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Council deliberation? Okay. Councilmember Branch?
Eric, thank you. You said that they currently have a 20-foot sign, is that what I heard?
23-foot, yes.
23-foot?
Yep.
And if they change it, they can only put up a 10-foot?
According to the C1 zoning regulations, and when, when looking at this specific location in town, that may, you know, seem a bit of a surprise, but there are plenty of other locations around town, zoned C1, where a restriction on sign height to prevent tall pole signs is, is good planning practice. And so it's, I don't, from a staff perspective analyzing this case, I don't really perceive it to be an issue with the sign code. I perceive it to be inadequate zoning for this particular property.
Well, I guess getting down to it, my, my actual question was, how did they get the 22-foot sign if it wasn't within code?
The sign code regulations were modified quite extensively about four years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
I can understand the grandfathering and how this would enhance their business, but I'm not so sure I'm in favor of putting larger signs on Hyde Park. I kind of like the look of that street and the coziness of that residential development, or commercial development, so I don't know that I'd, at first glance, I'd be in favor of 23-foot signs or 20-foot signs all along that road there. I'm not sure what the rationale for staff-initiated change would be on that, so it's, the jury's out for me on that.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Okay. 2016-69.
An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Approving a Preliminary PUD Plan for Property Located at 2220 Weathered Rock Road, Described as Part of Tract B of Millbrook Subdivision, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Thank you. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up on the screen is a vicinity map. You'll see Ellis Boulevard toward the top of the screen, and the parallel roads of Lorenzo Green Drive and Tanner Bridge Road going down through the center of the screen. The subject property is highlighted there in between those two roads, located on Weathered Rock Road. This is a zoning map showing the property highlighted. It is zoned a PUD, a Planned Unit Development District, and the property owner has applied for a PUD plan to develop property with two residential triplexes. To go back one, one slide here, there is an existing apartment complex to the north of the property, and the property across the street is developed with a number of residential duplexes. And so this is the preliminary PUD plan submitted for the development, two residential There would be two units on the top of each building and one located in the, in the lower level. You'll see the two units at the top would have garages beside by-side buildings. This item was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of October 13th, and is scheduled for a public hearing in front of the City Council on November 21st. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Barron. 2016-70.
An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Amending the 2015-2016 Budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by Appropriating Additional Funds Within the Parks Fund.
Thank you. Mr. Gates?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill amends the 2015-2016 budget within the Parks Fund by recognizing insurance claims, revenues, and appropriating the funds for building cleanup, repairs, and content replacement at the Washington Park Ice Arena from the August 1st flood, flash flood. We're also requesting suspending the rules this evening to meet the end of the fiscal year requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Branch, you're the sponsor of the bill, would you want to make the request?
I move to suspend the rules.
Okay. Are there any objections? Hearing none, we will have the third reading of 2016-70.
An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Amending the 2015-2016 Budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by Appropriating Additional Funds Within the Parks Fund.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion, questions, deliberation? Okay. Roll call, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Branch?
JJ, just for information, this is money that has been spent already and just basically reimbursed by the insurance company?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2016-71.
An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Amending the 2016-2017 Budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by Changing the Personnel Schedule Within the Department of Finance and Information Technology Services.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a request to reclassify a vacant GIS position into a Systems Analyst position, and we are requesting a suspension of the rules because this position will be maintaining and managing the public safety systems of the city, the New World system, the e-ticketing system, and the ENCODE court software. So because of these public safety and court aspects, we are asking for a suspension of the rules to get this position posted and the vacancy hired.
Thank you. Councilman Branch is the sponsor, would you like to suspend?
I'd like to suspend the rules on this one also.
Thank you. Are there any objections to that? Hearing none, we will have third reading of 2016-71.
An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Amending the 2016-2017 Budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by Changing the Personnel Schedule Within the Department of Finance and Information Technology Services.
Thank you. Any council deliberation? Councilman Prather?
Mrs. Miller, will this have any effect on this current year's budget?
Now, the request is actually to, to change the personnel schedule of the 2016-2017 budget. There is a fiscal impact, there's a difference between the GIS position and the Systems Analyst position, but that information is only in there for information purposes, we're not suggesting amending the budget.
Thank you.
Further council questions or deliberation? Okay, roll call, please. Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 13, Bills Pending 2016-64.
An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute a $16,537 Grant Agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Public Transit Operating Assistance.
Thank you. Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, it's a grant agreement, MoDOT, the amount about doubled from last year's grant. It's an operating grant for our transit system and helps us fund its operation.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation of council? Roll call, please. Graham?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2016-65.
An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute a Lease with Nick's Family Restaurant Incorporated for Space Within the Terminal Building at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Thank you. Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this lease agreement with Nick's Family Restaurant, periodically, about every five years, we bid out the space at the airport, and this is the most recent bid on that restaurant space, and Nick's Restaurant was one of the low bid, or, excuse me, the high bid and the only bid. The cost is about $8,400 a year of revenue, and it'll go in the airport fund.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? You could have brought us some fried chicken, just saying. Yeah. I know you were all thinking the same thing that I was, so, all right. Roll call, please. Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 14, Nothing on the Informal Calendar. Item 15, Resolutions. We have RS 2016-24.
A Resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Adopting the CDBG 2017 Action Plan and Authorizing Its Submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Okay, Mrs. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city staff prepares an action plan each year for the use of community development --
Item 15, resolutions. We have RS 2016-24.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, adopting the CDBG 2017 action plan and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Okay. Mrs. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city staff prepares an action plan each year for the use of community development block grant funds, and this year, in accordance with the citizen participation plan, an extensive public involvement activity was conducted. As part of that activity, the activities are noted in your report. Based on our current allocation of $262,865, the programs that would be supported in next year's plan would be affordable housing, about 29% of the budget, public facility and infrastructure improvements, about 30% of the budget, public services, which provides supportive services for low-income and special needs populations, about 10% of the budget, and demolition assistance to remove slum and blight, about 11% of the budget. And 20% of the budget is allocated to administration and planning, so that accounts for 100% of the $262,865. Now, at this time, we don't exactly know what the amount will be for next year, so the budgeting is based on the current allocation. So when that amount is received, we'll amend the budget to reflect that known amount.
Thank you. Any council questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Resolution passes. 16, presentations from the gallery on other topics. Individuals limited to three minutes. Without exception, all presentations can be made from the podium, and we have signed up. Former Mayor George Hartsfield is here to speak on the Purry redevelopment. Welcome, Mr. Hartsfield. It's always nice to have a former mayor address the council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for the opportunity to discuss this briefly with you, representing the Purry Group. Vic Purry is out of state this week and not available. And I guess we need to make the request official, that we're asking for a resolution to declare the Truman End Site blighted, and you all have seen the blight study during the TIF deliberations, and it's pretty conclusive that it is a blighted piece of property. I just want to mention four points, that this is very different than the TIF law and the TIF program. For one thing, it's simpler. You don't have a different commission. You don't have a number of things that you have to do with going through the TIF process. It's also less of a negative impact on the taxing jurisdictions. Land clearance and redevelopment authority tax abatement is 10 years for no increase in the property tax, and the TIF tax abatement was 23 years. So it's quite different as far as the impact on schools and other local taxing jurisdictions. The project will stimulate the local economy. If you have looked at some of the stats lately on the City of Jefferson, we're a no-growth city, and we have been for probably eight or 10 years. Since this data tells us that we're gaining about nine people a year in population in the city, county a little more, but still not very impressive. If you talk to the executives of the banks, they'll tell you that the loan demand is very meek and not where they'd certainly like to see it. The project's $56 million of construction money over the two phases of the project, and after the full operation of the properties, would employ or create 160 additional permanent jobs. So it's significant. You know, it's not quite the same as Continental, 200 jobs were pledged, but it's still significant. The lead role for this particular request comes from the Land Clearance Redevelopment Authority, which in the case of Jefferson City is a housing authority. But you're being asked to adopt a resolution to start the process. Then they will pick it up from there, and they will come back to you if they approve the redevelopment plan, and you will have to, an opportunity to confirm their recommendation if they're recommending approval. And you have two major things to look at. Is the project feasible, and is it consistent with the city's comprehensive plan? So that's really a quick overview, but some points that point out the differences in kind of the process that we have before us. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hartsfield. Do we have any questions for Mr. Hartsfield tonight?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 17, council and staff discussion of presentation topics. Councilman Mahalovich?
I'd just like a, kind of a update on progress on the Capitol Avenue blighting, blight study, and further actions will be necessary by this group in the near future, hopefully. So I could postpone that to the next council meeting, or if Janice or Steve is prepared to say anything about that, but I think, I'd like to keep that in front of us, the Capitol Avenue development, including what other tools they'll need, such as the overlay districts and the other issues that we've talked about, that would ensure that we secure that neighborhood in the future as we condemn buildings and go through that process. So I just ask that we continue to keep that on our radar.
Sure. Mrs. McMillan, would you like to answer?
Yes, thank you. So there are a few things happening, one of which is that the LCRA, Land Clearance Redevelopment Authority Board, did meet to approve adopting a new urban renewal plan or preparing a new urban renewal plan. As you know, a portion of the area that was addressed in that blight study was covered in an urban renewal plan. So their Board of Commissioners voted to prepare a new plan for the entire area that was covered by the blight study. So part of that, as Mr. Hartsfield alluded to, was that a determination has to be made by the Planning and Zoning Commission that the urban renewal plan comports with the city's comprehensive plan. So that will be the next step. The Planning and Zoning Commission actually has a special meeting scheduled for Thursday, November 17th, to do that very thing, to review the urban renewal plan and make that determination. And so that agenda will be coming out this week, and so that will be the next step. Now, the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission actually goes back to the LCRA. So the LCRA will complete the urban renewal plan and then for its submission to the council.
Has the LCRA set a meeting yet, knowing that there's a special meeting on Thursday, the 17th?
They may have discussed it, but they have not let me know of a date at this time, so I would expect that they would be getting back with me pretty soon to let me know about a date. I have communicated with them about the deadlines to get something on the council agenda, so they're aware of those timeframes.
Great.
I still have concerns about what could be built back there, and so I'd hope that we're still looking at the overlay district and other issues that might impact what is rebuilt if someone chooses to buy that property under this blighted and urban renewal.
Yes. So the guiding plan is the Central East Side Plan, which supports rehabilitation and preservation, but there may be some buildings that, because of their deteriorated condition and the expense to perform a rehabilitation, may have to be torn down. So it would be good to have guidelines in place to govern those new builds.
Thank you. Any further questions? I'm glad to see the LCRA has decided to take the step to do the new urban renewal plan. That's a very positive step forward and shows that they also are just as interested in the city and seeing that area become redeveloped, so that's a good step. Any other council and staff discussion on presentation topics? Any new business, item 18? Any unfinished business, 19? Item 20, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
So pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, I have entertained a motion to go into closed session to discuss legal action, Section 610.021.1. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Motion passes, and closed session will be across the hall in five minutes. Thank you. [end of transcript]